It's five minutes early. We have all the players here. I don't see any reason not to start. Okay, so this is the zoning board of appeals. Today is Monday, 9 November 2015. So if you wouldn't mind just coming forward, identifying yourself.
Hank?
Yeah.
Since we're a new board-
Yep.
Should we vote on a chair?
I thought of that, but why don't we take care of-
Do this at the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who's sitting on it?
What's his-
Who's sitting for this?
Well, let's see. We have, I think we have all the regular-
You have all the regular people.
We have all the regulars, so the regulars will sit for this one. So that will be me, Chris, Cynthia, Mark, and Edie.
Edie.
That's you.
Welcome, Edie.
You didn't change your name to Edie, right? Okay, alright, just checking. Okay, alright, so fine. So let's do that. So whoever is speaking for SH-
My name's Christopher Sheen. I'm the Associate Executive Director for Brookdale Woodbridge.
Okay, so I think you need to sign in. Is there a sign in up there? Okay.
Okay.
Yep, you can have Zenas tell us what you're gonna tell us and we'll go forward.
Okay. Well, we applied for a second sign at the base of our driveway, which is on, I think it's Highland Road. Our main sign is on Amity Road, which is our address, 330 Amity Road, but it's also, you know, you can't get there from Amity Road. You actually have to go down Highland to get to the driveway to get up to the community.
Okay. So-
So we want permission to have, add a sign at the base of the driveway.
Okay. Terry, can you give us a little background, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure. I don't know- If many of you here were here in 1997, when the first sign on Amity Road was by a variance, perhaps you worked with- This is your fault. And this is a rather unique property as it has frontage on Amity Road, which consists largely of wetland areas.
Yes.
And our sign regulations have since changed, but at that time, to get that particular sign that is at Amity Road now, required a variance by this board. And I believe it has a second variance that was never executed when Marriott, it's been sold by many different companies since that time.
Yeah.
The, but it's true that the actual ingress into the place is on another street. And we've heard a lot of testimony on other signs. This board has met about a lot of signs for our businesses in town. And while the Town Planning and Zoning Commission has given us new sign regulations to deal with it, we hope, has hoped lessen the amount of variances that the, that you'll have to hear, apparently we didn't anticipate this one. And this is that fact that, that we hear about wayfinding, signs being a wayfinding, and depending on the speed of Amity Road, you need it, you need to know, a driver needs to know in advance where he's got to turn off and onto a piece of property. We have to realize that that, your facility has a number of visitors that are not necessarily as familiar with the area as we all may be. And so they have trouble, while they might get to the turnoff on the street, they may not know where the driveway is next. This sort of sign that you've already constructed has, of course, is not anticipated in our regulations whatsoever. We're only one, allowed one independent sign, and, and everything else requires a variance from you after a finding of hardship having to do with the land. I would like to suggest, unless you are about to suggest this, that, that a, that one could consider a hardship if your actual place of driveway is not on the street address that you happen to be. I don't know that it would be any more useful to you to, to change your address, even if that could be done, by the way, and I don't know how Google changes addresses on people, for example, these days. We used to worry about the post office and, you know, not so much anymore. But I don't know it would be useful to you to change your address to that particular street, because that wouldn't assist your visitors much either. So in the sense, in this essence, that's the issue in front of you.
As it stands now, zoning allows one sign.
Correct.
So one might think that, take down the sign on Amity Road, since it's useless to you anyway, at least you claim it is, and put it on the other road.
Well, I don't want to argue his case for him. I might add that I don't think it's useless at all. I, I think it's a, it's a necessary wayfinder to get you to the, to get to the right-
Okay.
-sign, in my opinion.
What happened in 1997, you said? There was a variance issue?
For the sign that exists on Amity Road now. Under the then zoning regulations, we didn't allow that.
We didn't-
Don't forget, this is a Residence B district, by the way.
Oh, that's what I wanted to know.
It's not in the commercial district.
You sent out a letter to all the neighbors on Highland?
I believe as part of the application, we did, yes.
Any objections? Did you hear any objections?
We have, we have only, we've not heard from anyone in particular about this. We've, we have a list of people that they were sent to. North Street, West Street.
Okay, you heard nothing from them, their objections heard?
We haven't heard yet. I don't know. There's other people in the room, perhaps, who-
What's the actual size of the sign again? Five by what?
Five feet by forty square.
Yeah.
Four forty square.
Something's-
Five by what?
It's a five feet by four and a half.
It's in your application materials, by the way.
Yeah, I know. It's a five by four. And what's the sign on Amity Road? What's the size of that?
Small. That I don't know.
Small, isn't it?
It is small.
Larger, ninety feet.
Why would you need such a big sign right there?
Well, you really can't see. We have people that drive by and miss our place every, every day. When they, they're coming to, they, they call and say, "We can't find your place here at 330 Amity." They say, "Yes, well, at the blinking light, you gotta go in and then the driveway."
I understand that, but why would you, you wanna put a bigger sign on Highland than you have, than you have on Amity?
Yes.
And once you turn on Highland-
We, we thought it was a very nice looking sign for the area. I mean, it's a, it's a very nice area in there with the nice houses. We thought a nice, appropriately sophisticated sign would look good.
Well, why wouldn't you go with the same size sign you have on Amity Road?
Well, that wasn't one of the options, the signs that we had to choose from.
Can I add something?
No.
My name is Luis Angel. I'm the Senior Executive Director for Brookdale.
Pull up a chair and sign in.
Okay, thank you. One of the things I did wanna add was that we did have a few neighbors comment that our trailer trucks, when they would make a food delivery, would go past our property up and around, and because there's no outlet, it kinda comes to the back of our property, they by default meant to our property. So that was also part of our rationale for putting a sign, so that when the trailer truck entered, they come in through our main entrance versus going up through the road, through the neighborhood, and disturbing all the neighbors. So that was, again-
Why would you need such a big sign?
Because it's a lower-than-ground sign. It's something you need to be able to kinda see. Anything small, there's a lot of trees.
Why don't you put it up higher, put a smaller sign?
It's, you know, that was just one of the options that we, when we chose, had options, that was one of the options that we chose.
You might be better off putting it up higher with the little stone.
What a smaller sign. It's a big sign.
Alright, any other questions, comments?
Terry, in the application, in section nine, it asks, has any previous variance been sought for this property? And you've already spoken about one in 1997. There was a second one-
There was?
After 1997, correct?
Correct.
But what was the result of the second one?
It was the-
Application?
Roughly the same size as the 1997, but it was made out of stone instead of wood. And I like to describe it as the flying stone sign, because the stone started ten feet up in the air and then went up, and it looked, it looked like, it frankly looked more like, like your, your, your new sign looks, as a, as a low hanging pedestal type, you know, a sign without a, without elevation. Except that in the wetlands area, if they would've put that, you know, absolutely no one would've seen that. And so it was, it was a branding effort, I believe, by Marriott at the, at that time. Unbuilt.
Would, that was approved?
It was approved, and it was unbuilt.
I thought I remember one being denied.
There was a lot of testimony over many nights-
Yes.
And eventually approved.
That's why I was surprised not to see anything in this space, since it was a long time ago. So my memory is fuzzy, but that would've been helpful, I think, to have that information in the space, so we could look at the history of signage on this property.
I did bring the 1997 file with me. If you'd like to view it, be happy to, happy. Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
You're a young guy and you can't remember?
Seventeen years ago.
I can't remember what happened for breakfast.
Eighteen years ago. This predated you, Terry.
Just.
This was a long time ago.
I'd like to ask a question while, while he's looking at-
Yeah, no, I, yeah, please do.
Is there a consistent, this is owned by, do you have multiple locations, or is this a single property that you-
In Connecticut, or nationwide, you have about eleven hundred communities.
So is the signage a brand, the way that you did this, is similar to other signage that are under other facilities?
Very similar, yes. Yep.
If it is on a rural street, a residential neighborhood.
It's brand.
That's right. First, this is on Amity Road.
Any other questions from the board?
And this sign has already been constructed, correct?
Correct.
Is there anyone from the community who wants to speak their name? Alright, so I guess we will close, unless there's any other questions, comments.
I do have one.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
How did it come to us? Is there-
We, following up on a complaint, we, we found a sign and asked them to participate, which they have.
Any other questions? Fine, so we'll close that, and then we can then discuss it. Discussions from anyone? No.
In, in the regulation-
Pardon me?
In the regulation, it doesn't stipulate necessarily maximum amount of signage.
Doesn't allow it at all.
Right.
We have, we have lots of different other kinds of signage in our new regulations. We, we went looking for, we saw all of the signed applications from our business district that had to be heard by this board as a routine matter. We didn't think it was good for businesses to have to go through that, with all due respect to this board. You've been historically very cooperative with businesses in our community, and, and I think it's important to be so, but if a business wants certainty, I believe, and we, in trying to come up with a, with the sign regulations for Woodbridge in the commercial area, we, you haven't seen a lot of those requests, because we've gotten, we think we've got mostly right, the regulations, so that a business can anticipate how many signs they can have, and, and so far, they've been able to live with that. You'll know if a regulation works if, if they don't have applications at the zoning board of appeals. The, what we don't have a lot of in town are single pedestal signs. Almost every one of them have been created by a special exception. In the, don't forget, our, our earlier regulations only required, you had your choice between either between a, a sign on a building or a pedestal sign. And that was the, most of the variances, I think we can track them, go up and down Amity Road and have, and identify which is a, created by variance and which is created by not. We also created other subclass of signs, where there are all sorts of directional signs, once you get onto the site, in fact, you can have, you know, in and out, and you can have all these other sorts of things. We still don't have any drive-through signs, by the way. If we ever did get a drive-through, we would have a, have a menu board. You know, the last, the last, the first and only one that we have is Starbucks, and, and that required a, a demonstration of hardship by Starbucks for having a, a, a menu board. So-
It's a hardship.
You know, aside from, so we've, we've gone from, from one sign being allowed by, by right in the commercial area, by special exception, and so there's some controls over size and height and color and texture and everything else that you can talk about, except content, to, and still prohibiting the second sign. But because this is a Residence B district, while this facility is there by, by right, because we changed our zoning regulations to allow these sorts of facilities in the Residence B district, and by the way, in the Dev One district. You know, no, no adjustments were, were made for signage, and while this is truly residential, this facility, it's not really the kind of residence that you, that we have in the rest of the Residence B district. So-
What do you mean by that?
Well, we have a high-density residency in this facility, and the rest of the Residence B district is single-family detached homes, which don't have this sort of density, don't have this sort of visitor. And so I think that, that while you have a secondary access point to your parking lot at the top of North Street, as I recall, right? And that's what you were talking about with truck traffic.
Right, when they would go by our main entrance, not realizing where they would have turned.
Right.
And by default, coming out the, the back entrance.
Right, right. You know, I think that, that, you know, nobody on, on, on Main Street, on North Street, any of those streets in that Residence B district, you know, has the amount of visitors, has the amount of truck traffic, has the amount of density of residency that this facility has. So it's rather unique.
Okay.
And as far as this, this size, I know it's Residential B, but from the commercial district, I'm sorry, did you say that there is a maximum size limit in commercial?
There sure is.
And is this within, I know we're comparing apples and oranges, but is this within that size?
Let me, let me look that up for you.
That's a good question.
We would allow twenty square feet.
And this one's how much? Double that. And the sign on Amity Road, you'd only square feet, that is approximately.
I don't know. I'd have to look that up.
I'll have to tell you that.
The, and this would be a freestanding sign erected or placed perpendicular or parallel to the public street or highway to which the building or structure fronts or butts, provided the sign does not exceed five feet in height or forty square feet in area.
I'm sorry, five feet in height and forty square feet in area. That's what they're asking.
Five feet in height. And this sign was already up, right?
This sign is presently up, correct.
An eagle eyes bombed it, right?
There was a complaint, and, and we followed up on that complaint. Thank you.
In a facility that has, a company that has eleven hundred facilities, you'd think they'd know they have to come to the zoning board before they put up a sign like that.
I believe that there's a certain amount of people, I don't, your question is, should be directed at these individuals, frankly, but the, I believe there's a fair, I get to meet a number of people who, in our community, that, that seeks redemption rather than permission.
And I know we're not a safety committee, but stopping the traffic prior to going up into that residential area, I would think would be safer.
I think it's a virtuous thing. You're absolutely right. It's, it's-
Think you need to sign that picture?
It's probably-
I didn't comment on the size of that house.
I mean, if you lived, if you lived, if you lived out of our community, and you had a relative staying in this facility, and you wanted to visit that relative, you'd be very comforted, I suspect, by this sign saying, "Oh, you know, I first got off that terrible highway, Amity, and now it looks like I can find my way to, you know, Aunt
The sign on Amity Road doesn't have that at all.
I don't think it's the most effective use of signage. You're absolutely right.
No, I went today to look at the sign.
Uh huh.
And I, I've lived and would draw my life, and I didn't know that was Highland Road. I knew it was north and west and Maine and all of that, and the sign definitely showed, but from Amity Road, I wouldn't have had a clue.
Mm-hmm. I think signs, you know, there's some people in our community who think signs are just horrible, by the way, and signs on Amity Road, even worse.
Yeah.
And I, we, over the years, we've, we've heard a lot from our community about signs. But I think that there are good uses of signs, too. And, you know, I think that, that both size, height, and texture count. And so, I mean, I have, you basically have to apply some judgment to that.
Well, I, my thought on this is that the sign is way less intrusive than a bunch of trucks turning around, cars moving in and out of the neighborhood, and if the neighbors had to choose one versus the other, that the sign would win. And as Cynthia said, safety, but even just the noise of trucks and cars and whatnot, I think that the sign is far less intrusive. And if it, if it indeed does accomplish the goal of getting business, the trucks and traffic to the facility more efficiently, then, as you said, it's, it's, you have to kinda-
Then again, does it have to be that big?
Yes.
Twice the size of a, of a sign that is supposed to be in the-
Well, you know, those big trucks, they can't see those little tiny signs.
They're going down a road slow. Amity Road, you're going forty-five miles an hour. When you go down the side road, you're going twenty, twenty-five miles an hour.
Not on Baldwin Road.
It's not Baldwin Road. It's not on Baldwin Road. Not on Baldwin, it's on, whatever, Highland Road.
Well, you're talking town road.
Looking at the size of the actual sign, because it's got a base and it's got a little pillar on the side, the size of the actual sign is roughly twenty-two square feet. Is that, am I doing my math correct?
So it was four forty.
Eighty-four inches, which is seven feet, right?
Yes.
By forty inches. Just three inches changed.
Right.
So that's twenty-one, twenty-two feet, right?
Yeah.
So it's-
Why do they say forty then?
Just to trick us.
If you factor in the base and all that, it's gonna be bigger.
Right.
I don't think we factored that in, looking at the application in 1997, when you looked at the size of the sign. I think the variance was for the actual physical sign, not for the pillars, because if you look at the application for that 1997 sign, it had like a roof and some columns. That was not factored in as part of the sign. It was the physical sign, which is what they asked the variance for.
When we did the ones for the Jehovah's Witnesses, we figured that in, remember?
Yes, I, I do remember.
It's the actual size of everything going in.
The actual number is twenty-three point three three square feet.
Thank you. I didn't have a calculator in here, but-
You can do it in your head?
Oh, no, it's too late to do math.
Alright, well, can we, is any further discussion on the board? Can we have a motion, one way or the other?
I'll move to accept this application.
Can we have a second?
To approve.
I'll second.
Okay, so all in favor? All opposed? Okay, so we have one opposed, but the other members voted positively, so it is, it's approved.
Thank you.
Do you wanna articulate the-
Yeah, well, the hardship is-
The hardship is the location on another street.
Right.
The wetland area.
Okay.
Right. They couldn't bring the driveway through the wetlands.
I, I wish them best of luck for that.
They could've built a bridge.
I don't think they could've built a bridge. They wouldn't allow that.
That's right.
They wouldn't allow that, no.
Okay, so we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now to the second part, because now we have a new committee seated, so let's take care of that. So welcome to the new members of our board. Alright, and so now, since we have a new seated committee, we need to decide on chairmanship. So-
Well, I'll make a motion that we add to the agenda, the election of a chair.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll just send on there, that's right.
Second.
Discuss that and vote on that first, correct?
Yes. Okay, so who seconded?
Cindy.
Dickerson Givens, first and second. Okay. Alright, so, alright, we take a vote on that. All in favor of, okay?
Can, can we vote as alternates?
Yeah.
Alternates can't vote. I don't think alternates could vote.
I don't, I don't think alternates vote on that.
Nope.
Because you have to be seated.
The seated people, the seated members have to can vote.
So all in favor of having a vote? Okay, so. Alright, so now we're having, everyone's agreeing that we should have a vote. Okay, so let's discuss.
Well, I'll make a motion that, I'll nominate Cindy Givens as chair, and I'll say that you've done a great job as chair. I think it's good to switch it up every once in a while, and I think that Cindy's got good experience. I'll nominate Cindy as chair.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. So-
I had my discussion before discussion, but-
No, it's fine. You can, it's fine. Alright, so.
I was chair probably early two thousands of this board, and it's an interesting thing to do, and it's good to have members that are longstanding, who wanna, you know, stay, stay involved in this board, and it's good to have, you know, rotate people around, so different people have that opportunity.
Okay, alright, so let's have a vote. All in favor of Cindy? Okay, we have, I don't know, I guess it's by majority.
Yeah.
Okay, so Cindy is our new chair.
Thank you. You're a hard act to follow.
Yeah, not that hard.
Been easy the last eight months, hasn't it?
That's gonna be, that's gonna be the hard part.
Hey, when you were chair, those were the meetings every month that went to like eleven o'clock and then-
We, I'll tell you, when I first got on this board, which was twenty years ago, we had meetings every month, and there were two, three, four applications a month.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
And, and it's surprising to me how few meetings we have.
Twenty years ago, that's high.
I can't believe our last meeting was in March.
I know.
Well, Chris, if you, if you think about it, you know, twenty years ago, Woodbridge was different.
Yes, it was.
Woodbridge was, Woodbridge was growing.
That's right.
Woodbridge is not particularly growing at the moment. The, you know, that you had a, the kind of things that were in front of you were, you had a ineffectual sign regulation-
Yes.
That caused a lot of those sorts of things. You had our more older distinguished parts of town where the older structures were closer to the road, and anytime you do, anything in the back of the house, you, you're in the front yard, right? So there were a lot of that- So there were a lot of that renovation stuff going on. And quite frankly, you had a different enforcement officer. And, you know, the other thing that you hear is that...
Was the one after George.
Yeah.
Want to make your mouth socks.
And you had, you don't have as many people wishing to appeal the decision of the zoning enforcement officer, which is the other thing, other activity that you do. You've seen some of that, because we use that as a tool to engage the community in a conversation about their community.
One thing also we've done is we updated the Town Plan of Conservation Development and helped update the zoning regulations, which hadn't been done in an overall manner for a couple of decades at least.
Absolutely.
That were put off, that was done in 2005 and now redone again currently in that process, or finishing up that process. They haven't done it yet, right? I don't think they're finished.
We have a new Town Plan of Conservation Development, all available to you online, which is, by the way, another thing they didn't have 20 years ago.
Exactly.
And they're now in the process of taking that, the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, and taking that document, which I encourage you to look at, by the way, because it's an interesting document, and then making the zoning regulations now fit that new Plan of Conservation Development. So there'll be more changes.
In some ways, our lives have been made a lot easier. I think also the economy's been a little challenging the last several years.
Absolutely.
There's not, definitely not as much building going on as there used to be.
You know, at any one time, we would have 21 houses underway.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I think we have three.
You can ask realtors, they'll tell you.
Yeah. It's challenging, right? It's challenging.
Well, we make a pot of soup here most afternoons, by the way.
I'll be in.
Just in case.
Exactly.
You want to open a soup kitchen in the basement?
No, just realtors.
We have to vote on the minutes.
On the minutes. March, I don't remember what happened. I wasn't here, right? No, since I was excused, I think. You were excused too, weren't you? Were you in?
It sounds familiar, but who knows?
Oh, it says, oh, it's... No, the minutes. Those are minutes. No, minutes.
So in this, in this case, Terry, we have minutes from March. There's actually only three people in the room who participated, who are seated on the board, and Alden is an alternate, so Alden should vote on the minutes, correct?
I'm an alternate, no.
And I'm sorry, Arlene, that's right, two, only two.
You were on for that meeting.
So Arlene and Alden, they were there. As long as they're there, they can vote on the minutes, correct?
Correct.
Even if they're not seated.
They have knowledge of the minutes.
Yes. So they were seated to vote on the minutes for March.
Perfect.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 9, 2015.
A second, Dave. A second.
Okay, so we got that?
Yeah, we need to have linked it back to be able to...
I just...
That's right, that's right. I know. Can we just email these to Lynn?
We're just looking at the content, not the grammatical...
Right. We'd be happy to look at.
Yeah, we go to conservation meetings with, who's the chairman for the...
So who's the...
Eric, Eric Stone.
Stone?
It would take an hour and a half to get through the previous minutes. An hour and a half just to get through the minutes.
All four of us have to vote.
Okay.
There we go.
Everybody have a happy turkey.
We have a turkey.
Well, it's close enough to make.
We have to have the vote on it.
Mark, you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion, Jerry.
There you go. Second.
Thanks a lot.